And I hope Robert Sparrow is here, the pastor? Yes, sir. Come forward and give us some inspiration for this evening. All stand, please.
First, I'd like to thank you for coming to the Southwest Florida Regional Pastors and Leaders Meeting in Riverside Park. It's good to see you again.
Very good, yes, yes.
Heavenly Father, I thank you, Lord, for these fine people. As we gather together, Lord, I ask, Father, that you would place your hand of blessing upon every person and every family that's represented here. Give the mayor and the council people wisdom and discernment and understanding as they make decisions that are best for our community, Lord. We pray your richest blessings upon them and every family that's here, in Jesus' name.
Amen, amen. Allison? Is Allison available? Give the pledge. Maybe he isn't.
He's busy at the moment, but I'll do it.
How about you, Clark?
Our flag is still high, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Debbie. See who's here tonight?
Councilwoman Caramba?
Here.
Councilman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Here.
Councilman Corey?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Okay, number five.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, one of the presentations that we have is for the Benita Springs Wildcats, which you'll see up front. And they just had an undefeated season, so it'll be a real quick proclamation. They have a photo shoot down at Riverside Park to celebrate their little victory. So instead of making them sit through two hours of zoning, my request is that we bump them to the front of the meeting, and they would like a picture with you as well.
Okay, is that the motion?
That's the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Go call, Deb.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Nigh.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, y'all come forward.
The one, yes, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, if there are no other changes, I just want to make a note that there was a mistake in the agenda tonight. Items 13A and 13C are both first readings of ordinances, but they are not public hearings. I just want to make that note for the public.
Okay, thank you. Okay, gentlemen, folks, come forward. Fill us up. Oh, you go on the circle there. You want to get everybody up here? Come on, look at everybody.
I'll have the award. All right, so...
Is this one team?
This is one team. So this is our undefeated Benita Springs Wildcats, and they play over at Marnie Field. They finished the regular season undefeated. We're gonna... We're gonna... You're gonna go over with Mr. Mayor, if you would, over with Coach, and he's gonna call each one of them by name. So that they can come over and get their trophy, and then we're gonna do the big... Little ones first, for the kids. So each kid's name. All right, I'm gonna call you guys up. Amy, come on up, Amy. Freddie. Go ahead, Freddie. Jefferson. Kiona. Kendra. Carlos. Zion. Javison. Gabrielle. Aaron. Nicholas. And Oscar. Well, and there's actually... Oh, we got one more. All right, before he gives us this big trophy, so everyone knows what's going on, is this big trophy is their winning trophy. So the Marnie Fields Wildcats, that's their championship trophy. What they're gonna do is they're gonna give it to us at the city, and we're gonna keep it here and up in the office. So it's an honor, and you guys made your city very proud. So with that being said, who's gonna... Come on out, come on out. All right, and... There you go. There you go. There you go. And I just want to say, look, Coach Ramon, who did such an awesome job this year, I love it because it doesn't matter if they're up by eight goals or they're down by two, he's on 110 the entire time. So I love it, the kids love it, we beat Astero in the championship. Alex, the goalie, you just made it, you just made it, buddy. And so Keenan runs the league, and he just does such a great job. So I want to give you a second to say whatever you might like.
Yeah, so first of all, just a big congratulations to all you guys, first year playing in this tournament and going undefeated is an unbelievable, unbelievable event. So congratulations to you guys. And the big purpose for us being here today and giving over this trophy is just because we want to thank the city for all the support they give us. They allow us to use the soccer fields, and with the use of the soccer fields, we're able to create programs like this and keep making things like this happen. So just a really big thank you to the city of Benita.
All right. And to the council, thank you guys for letting us get this in front. Have a good time at your photo shoot, guys, thanks so much, congratulations. Oh, wait, don't move, we gotta do one last. We're gonna do the city picture, okay, hold on one sec.
What is going on? I want to get home to my pizza.
And as we're taking this picture, this is a recognition for the Benita Springs Wildcats after their 2021 undefeated season.
Wildcats.
Good job, good job, woo-hoo! Oh, yes, you can leave. Yes, yes, yes.
Have that energy level again.
No, 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 the parents want to leave.
Okay, I got the floor here, and... I'm the mayor of Benita Springs, and I welcome you all, and I'm glad to see you're here because it's you and me, we make "we," and "we" the people run this city and run this country. And I gotta make sure you don't forget that. We want your input, and we react to your input. And if you're not happy, let us know, we'll do what we can. Okay, now we got public comment. Anybody here has a public... You come to the microphone, please, and identify yourself, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Catherine Allman-McDonough. I'm a resident at Seasons, and I am rising to comment on Agenda Item Number 11, the request to remove the requirement of four HOA communities to furnish a beach shuttle service. I, first of all, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for your invitation to share our input. I was privileged to arrange for a town hall with Councilman Forbes at our community this past Monday. In addition to the materially changed circumstances that were in place when the requirement was originally imposed, the simple fact is, nobody wants this shuttle, not a single person that I have ever talked to. Seasons were still under developer control, they were kind enough to ask for our input, and I'm sure you'll be hearing more about that later, but economically, environmentally, logistically, nobody wants this thing. So thank you very much for considering the request, and thank you to Councilman Forbes for bringing this forward.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anybody else? There we go.
Hello, City Council, Mr. Mayor, I'm here to speak in favor...
Your name?
My name is Kyle Moran. I'm a longtime resident of Benita Springs. I'm here to speak in favor of the food truck park. In fact, I was there in downtown all day today. I own a property that's about 70 steps away from the food truck site, so we'll call that 200 feet. And it's occurred to me that the 5,000 or 6,000 square foot building that the applicant is proposing to build will be the most robust structure that has been built in that downtown that is non-residential and privately funded in at least the 30 years that I've been here. I think that that project's entirely consistent with the city's long-term goals for the downtown, to bring business, vibrancy, and jobs. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, the Gibbs Study, the DPZ Study, and for those that are concerned that food trucks represent some type of temporary structure, I think it's important to point out just how robust this structure will be. It's also important to point out that food trucks are great business incubators, and I think that those food truck vendors that go into those sites could be a source of future business growth and new restaurants for Benita Springs, which means more jobs and accomplishing our goals downtown. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Anybody else? Come on, folks, don't be shy.
I'll just note for the next two zoning items, there'll be separate public comments. So if you're here for anything else, we can...
Okay, can we move on? 8A.
Yes, the next item is a special exception request for a mobile food vendor park at the downtown district. This is the food truck park on city-owned property. This is a quasi-judicial item, so what I would like to do at this point, if anyone is here for this item and intends to speak, staff and the applicant, I wish to swear you in at this point, so please raise your right hand. Could you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. And I would also recommend that we incorporate Mr. Moran's comments from the earlier public comment into the record.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, go ahead, your name?
Good evening, Mike Fiegong with Community Development for the Record. We're gonna let the applicant go first, but I just wanted to give a brief synopsis of the request. As you heard, it is for a food truck park located within the T5 core of the downtown district, literally smack dab in the middle of the city off of Old 41. The case was... This is the result of an RFP that was voted on by council in October of last year. It requires a special exception for a food truck park in the downtown district. They went through the necessary application process, it was heard by the zoning board, and it was voted six to nothing in favor of the request. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to the applicants, which are Chris and Jim Magnus, for their presentation.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council, and city staff, you guys have been amazing through this entire process. I'm so grateful for the opportunity to be here tonight to present to you again, one more time, the rooftop at Riverside. Tonight, we are requesting that you approve the special exception for mobile food vendors on Old 41 for our project. Hope to tell you why life is...
Can we keep it to the trucks?
Excuse me?
Keep just addressing the food trucks, not the whole project, just...
Mr. Mayor, it is... The approval today is for the entire project. The entire food truck park, which includes permanent structures in addition to the truck stalls.
I thought it was just... Somewhere I read it, just the trucks. The trucks need a special exception.
The trucks is what needs a special exception, but the entire site plan, everything, is what's under review.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you so much. So I hope to tell you today why life is better at the top, the rooftop at Riverside. When we developed this tagline, we wanted people to know that when they come to the food truck park, we want to give you the best service, we want to have the most delicious food, we want to have the coldest beer, we want to give you the best experience with your family that you could possibly have in Benita Springs, and we're gonna do that. And in developing the logo for this project, we really had a blast down at the Historical Society. If any of you haven't been there, they have a wealth of information down there, and just an unbelievable amount of data and information on where we came from. And I originally thought that Benita Springs was built from a fishing town and built out from the Imperial River that way, but I found out that it's really built on citrus. So a lot of folks, when you look at the legal explanation of your home and where you live, it says Benita Farms. These are the citrus farms that the early settlers built in Benita Springs. They would take their citrus, put it on barges on the Imperial River, float it down the river to sell out at market. So we wanted to capture the importance of the Imperial River within our community and within the early settlers, and we have a two-tone river there to represent the Gulf Water mixing with the freshwater in the Imperial River, and then the orange circle around it represents the citrus for the first settlers for where we came from. So it was important to us to integrate that into the concept as we look through the lens of this project as being a huge benefit to the city of Benita Springs. The rooftop at Riverside goals and objectives, council, you've seen many of these slides before, I haven't had to change a whole lot. The goal with this project is to add value to the community through the rooftop at Riverside. We want to bring more fun, more excitement, and more activity to downtown Old 41. This will benefit local businesses, it will increase home values, it will strengthen the economic viability for current businesses, it will spur redevelopment and encourage innovative and new development throughout the downtown, with an emphasis on inspiring a truly breathtaking project at Imperial Crossings. This is one of the first slides that I had in my very first presentation back in October 2020, and you guys did that. You got in after approving us for this. You got five great projects for Imperial Crossings. That was incredible, and I think that a lot of that had to do with recognizing the activity that this project is going to bring to downtown. So how do we accomplish these goals? First of all, we're bringing in multimodal transportation and increasing that it's walkable, bikeable, and very pedestrian-friendly. And we talk about driving activity to downtown, we're looking at bringing in new businesses, new customers, increasing home values, increasing revenue and production for other area businesses. And when you have the multimodal transportation and you're driving more activity to the downtown, we're becoming partners in prosperity because a rising tide floats all ships. In activating the downtown, we want to bring in, we're going to bring in, a new workforce. We're going to expand our workforce in Benita Springs. This is gonna be a community asset that pairs great with the wonder gardens, the library, art festivals, and all the fun stuff that the city plans in Riverside Park, along with what charities do, and Taco Fest, Vegan Fest, and all the fests that we look forward to coming back to Riverside Park. This is an innovative outdoor dining experience and entertainment venue. This is going to draw visitors from all over and truly activate our downtown. Talking about civic uses and community benefits, we're going to have a nearly 600-square-foot playground with a mist wall for fun and cooling off. This is gonna be great for our Benita Springs families. It's a two-story breezy inviting open concept bar, and I'll show you some of the elevations in a 3D tour of it in a little bit. We have shaded courtyard seating, open air deck and patio seating. We have six times the required amount of open and green space on this half-acre project. It's really incredible. We did put in an elevator in the bar, and we also doubled the required amount of toilets and urinals per city code. This project, as I said, inspires multimodal transportation, this supports the Clean Streets Initiative, it also supports the Benita Plan. We're also putting in 25 community public parking spaces at our cost at the Lime Tree Lot, 27400 Old 41 Road, and this is a value-add asset for the city. We're creating additional seating for... An event viewing for Riverside Park events. The economic impact statement is from 2020. We wanted to make sure that we went with a group that the city respected and had used before. Fishkind had been purchased by PFM, so we used PFM Consulting for our economic impact statement. Annual economic returns to the school board, local and state, $15,000. Economic returns to Lee County, $26,000, with a one-time impact fee of nearly $93,000. The important one, the financial returns to the city of Benita Springs on this half-acre project, we're looking at taking a parcel that brought zero jobs to our community, brought zero entertainment, zero fun to our community, and brought zero dollars to the city of Benita Springs, and turning it into a project that's looking at bringing in nearly $18,000 a year in... Just to the city of Benita Springs. And quite honestly, I believe that this number is low because it was made a year ago, and we've seen where everything's gone since 2020. In addition to that, we're looking at creating an enormous amount of jobs on this half-acre parcel here. We're gonna talk about the direct effect, the indirect effect, and the induced effect. The direct effect refers to the effect created by our project directly. The indirect effect is the value created by jobs or spending that support the supply chain for this project, and the induced effect is the impact of spending due to the wages projected by this project. So over the short-term construction impact, we're looking at an output of nearly $3 million in the community. Annual and ongoing effects of this food truck park are looking at $6 million rippling through our economy and helping our citizens, our community, and our businesses, and we'll see this continue to grow as new and innovative businesses continue to come into the Old 41 corridor. So where is the rooftop at Riverside, and what will it look like? We are looking... If you look over here, the big orange box at the top is the lot in front of Napa. It is across the street from Riverside Park. That is where we propose to put the food truck park and the food truck pads. And then below that at the bottom is the space, it's the Lime Tree Parcel. That's where we propose to put in the additional 25 parking spaces. Now, when you look at this project, you look at Old 41, and you see a $20 million project. You look at the library, you see a $25 million project. You add in all the money that the city has spent on the studies, on DPZ, on the form-based code, which is now in effect. The city has put in a ton of money to this. There's still a dirt lot, Lime Tree Parking Spot, next to a $20 million improvement. Let us put our money to work for the city, put those parking spots in, we're gonna make it beautiful. The city will maintain ownership of that lot. By maintaining ownership of that lot, the Lions Club can continue their lease with the city, the city will make all the decisions on it. We don't have any control, we're just putting the money in to make the improvements. So with all this money that the city has put into Old 41, this is the opportunity that the city of Benita Springs has been looking for, to bring in something that will kick off the downtown. Here's a site plan for the project. On the bottom, the big square on the bottom is where the bar will be located. Next to that, you see some upside-down, right-side-up triangles, that's the playground for the children. And then you also see the food trucks parked around the sides. And what's important about the food truck pads is our dedication to making sure that this project is great for our community, not just for our use. And in doing that, we're bringing clean water and sanitary sewer and delivering that to every single pad in the food truck park. We are also delivering natural gas to each pad, and by doing this, we're going to make sure that we maintain the aesthetic beauty of our area and let our neighbors know that we appreciate them, because they won't see ugly stacks of propane tanks stacked behind these tanks. These food trucks will be busy. They're gonna be cooking, they're gonna be going, and they're gonna have natural gas piped right into their trucks, so we're not gonna have to worry about any ugly aesthetics behind the trucks. And on top of that, we're worried about sound, we care about our neighbors, we don't want noisy generators blasting all the time, so we're gonna have electrical hookups delivered to each food truck pad as well. These are all the things that we are incorporating into our site plan to ensure that we're developing something that is terrific for our community. Here is the site plan for the Lime Tree Lot, where we will put in 25 parking spaces. Again, this is a dirt lot next to a $20 million improvement, and we're gonna make this consistent and make it beautiful, and it'll be something that the city can use as it wishes, and we will pay for the improvements. Here's a quick elevation, I do have a 3D rendering of this, so I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time on it, but as you're driving north on Old 41, this is the... I'm sorry, as you're driving south on Old 41, this is the north elevation. This is the inside of the park looking towards Riverside Park. You'll see our pergolas here, our architectural tower that we have, and also the blinds, the Bahama blinds that we have, everything is consistent with the form-based code. This is the view from Reynolds, so as you're driving north on Old 41, this is the view that you'll see there. And this is the front of the building that you see as you're looking right across the street from Riverside Park. This is what it'll look like closed. We have 12-foot impact Louisiana-style shutters. These are going to be absolutely gorgeous, and this is what it'll look like when we're open, but we know that there's gonna be a lot more people in there when we're open. So here's the 3D rendering from the northwest perspective, looking at it from the front, and we'll do a quick 3D video for you here. So again, this is from the northwest perspective, and we'll come around and we'll look at the northern perspective. You see the architectural tower that we have, the pergola, we've got the blinds, and then this is from inside the park here. You see we have a second staircase on the inside, we also... On the outside there, we have another staircase on the inside. As we come around through Reynolds, people in Old 41 are gonna see this gorgeous pergola, people enjoying themselves up on a patio right across from Riverside Park, great for event viewing, great for people viewing, all around a good time. So this is the front that we have as well, have all the architectural aspects in place to be compliant with the form-based code, and we're gonna do a little video game simulation here and give you a view from bartender's view. Right now, we're looking back towards the interior of the park, and as we come around here, we've got an administrative office there, there's our elevator that we have, and we have another staircase there. We've got terrific event viewing and seating here, looking out towards Riverside Park. Then we come along towards Reynolds, where we have another view of the city property there, the Banyan Tree, and it's just absolutely gorgeous. We do have an exit staircase back there, as well as two more bathrooms on the second floor. Then we drop down to the first floor, we've got four bathrooms there, and then we head back over towards Reynolds Street. Again, we'll have great seating, a great view of the Banyan Tree, the city-owned property there, and we come back around to the front, where we'll be looking out towards Riverside Park and all the events and all the fun that our city has over there at Riverside Park. So now we get into the really fun stuff, the special exception zoning criteria, and I'll show you how we mark all 10 of these boxes. We'll go over these one by one, so I'm not gonna read those. Criterion A, where there exists changed or changing conditions that make approval of the request appropriate. The changed conditions are that we've gone from a site-based zoning to a form-based code. So because of this, the LDC requires a special exception. The rooftop at Riverside is proposed food truck park within the T5 transect of the downtown district, so this applies, and your approval of the rooftop at Riverside is aligned with the goal set forth in RFP Number 2002 with a long-term goal of engaging private enterprise in the economic growth and redevelopment of downtown Benita Springs. Check, one for one. Criterion B is testimony of the applicant. I hope we've done a pretty good job up here for you guys tonight. The rooftop at Riverside, I think I've shown you that this is a high-end and unique entertainment and dining venue. It's going to be an absolute blast. We've discussed the goals and objectives that we have regarding activating the downtown through jobs, through fun, through excitement, and also through all the economic benefits of this project. We have numerous civic uses and community benefits, we have a code-compliant site plan, we have a form-based code... I'm sorry, our physical structures are compliant with the form-based code. The rooftop at Riverside will be an economic, financial, and job-creating powerhouse for Benita Springs, and this use is consistent with T5 downtown Benita Springs neighboring properties. And the rooftop at Riverside will activate the downtown corridor, inspiring new businesses, new developments, and all kinds of fun for the great project that's going to happen at Imperial Crossings. So check two on Criterion B. Criterion C is testimony of staff. City council voted to approve the purchase and sale agreement, seven to zero. So we started at a really great spot. The zoning board unanimously supports approval of this special exception for mobile food truck vendors in a six-to-zero vote on 11/16. City staff has been responsible, responsive, and helpful throughout this process. City staff is recommending approval from city council. City staff is recommending approval from city council. With conditions, of course. And these conditions, we find reasonable and acceptable, and we're happy to go through and make this work. So criterion C, we get another check. Criterion D, testimony of the public. You heard Mr. Moran earlier. And perhaps some of the most exciting parts have been our neighborhood meetings. In February, we did our first neighborhood meeting. And I, I just, I love this story. Towards the end of the meeting, I could feel how excited people were for this project. And I asked the question, I said, "All right, how many people out of there, by show of hands, would like to see this project come to fruition?" And I had a smile on my face when I saw half the room with one hand up, and even bigger smile on my face when the other half of the room had two hands up. There is so much excitement for this project. We had our second neighborhood meeting on October 29th, again with overwhelming community support. We've had positive responses from downtown Benita Springs Alliance and Rotary Club presentations. We have excitement from downtown business operators that we talked to, from commercial landowners on the corridor. And all of the people that own land in that area are very excited about their property values. Now, Downtown Thriving did a post about the zoning approval. Downtown Thriving said, "Normally, we have five hundred to fifteen hundred impressions." With the post regarding the rooftop at Riverside, forty-one thousand impressions for this project. That is incredible. We've had, we have hundreds of likes and shares and comments. It is absolutely amazing. This is going to be a breathtaking project, and we have a tsunami of public support for this. So criterion D, testimony of the public, we get another check. Criterion E, now, this one is probably my favorite. The other ones are very exciting. But criterion E, this is actually nearly the definition of what you were looking for in RFP number 2002. Does, is it consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies and intent of the Benita Plan? The Benita Plan is intended to promote a mixed-use downtown with a variety of building types. Check. And uses that support viable and diverse local businesses and cultural institutions. Check. Walkable and complete streets. Check. Predictable standards. Check. Business investment. Check. Attractive, small downtown urban character and context-based development. Check, check, check. We nailed this one. This is what you guys voted for when you approved the PSA for this project. The goals and objectives of the rooftop at Riverside are to activate the downtown through the development of this new aesthetically pleasing entertainment and dining venue with an emphasis on multimodal transportation and drawing new and innovative commercial investment in downtown Benita Springs. Check. Check.
Can I make a motion? We approve this? I got a second. You want to keep going or?
Yeah, we're good to go.
Go ahead.
Roll call.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCarr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Public comment.
Hold on. Sorry, Mayor, you do need to take public comment prior to the vote.
Okay. I got one question. There's nothing in there that gives you the right to drink alcohol and beer in your place?
The, there is a.
You're going to have to get a special exception.
No, there is, there's an administrative approval for consumption on premises. And then we also have our liquor license in place already.
There's nothing in here. I went through, there's nothing in there that says you have a.
We have not submitted the consumption on premises.
Right. There, there's a separate process for them to get their alcohol approvals. They haven't started.
That's what I'm pointing to.
Right, yes.
It has to be approved by us.
No. In, in the downtown district, in the core of downtown, it's done administratively. So there's still a process they need to go through. There's still certain standards they need to meet. Noise ordinance, so on and so forth, well-defined areas, no alcohol beyond this point. You know, there, there's going to be certain conditions that are going to be in place on it. But the council agreed that for downtown to do it administratively.
When did they do that?
This was.
Before me, I guarantee.
It was, it was a couple of years ago.
We have, we have a, a bar right next door to it. It's two doors down. We got another bar, you know. Okay, you're, you're not done with this alcohol thing?
No, no, they still need to go through that process with city staff.
And, and the city staff's going to make the decisions and not, the city council has nothing to say about it?
We're going to review it based on the code criteria. So there is criteria that we will review. But the way it's written in the code is that it's an administrative decision at the staff level.
Okay, motion to approve. We got a second.
Public comment.
Public comment. I got 3D public up there real quick. Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCarr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McRumba?
Aye.
Motion carries. I hate to cut you short, but we've got all night here, you know.
Saved yourselves a lot of time. I could have gone on all night on this project. Mayor, council, staff, thank you all so much. We will not disappoint you. You're going to be very proud of your approval tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eight B, moving along here.
Good evening, Councilmember Mary. This is for the record. I would like to allow the applicant to say a brief presentation. Much of my report is in your staff report, but I'd be happy to present after the applicant is done. This is a request for a special exception at the Causeway Commerce Park, Unit M8 at 28280, Old 41 Road, for an indoor car wash and a detailing studio to allow ceramic coating to be performed on high-end vehicles by appointment only. I will let the applicant present.
Okay, and at this time, if there's, if you have not sworn in, is anyone else in this? Do you swear tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
All right, you're good to go.
All right, at any time, council, you want to approve this, I am 100% for it. I will get public information or anything, but you can shut me up at any time.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second.
All right.
We need public comment.
Public comment.
Public comment.
I'm sorry, sir, you, you, you succeeded.
Excuse me.
I succeeded?
Excuse me. I'm the chair over here, Laura.
No public comment.
Public comment?
I think they're going to approve him.
I have a motion to approve in a second.
Second.
Comment. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman McCarr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McRumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. God bless.
God bless. Yes, sir. All right. Okay, 9A, Strike Lane Signal. Who is this, Matt?
Oh, this is consent agenda.
This is your full consent agenda.
Sorry, Mayor, this is the consent agenda.
Okay, yes, 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 yes. Consent agenda is put together by the staff, and we vote to have the consent agenda approved.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any more comment? Roll call, please.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McRumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCarr?
Aye.
Okay, any comment about the agenda, yes?
I'd like to comment on A and B. First of all, I want to note the expense that is incorporated into just the design of the, of the light that's going in at Strike Lane in Old 41. I mean, I definitely think we need it, but it was kind of eye-popping to me because that didn't include the construction. That was just for the design. So I don't, I guess maybe I've asked Matt, well, what is the construction going to cost?
Typical for a signal is around three to $400,000.
Oh, so it's, it's.
Total.
Most of it is in the design. All right, okay. I mean, I'm in favor. I just was curious. And then my second comment was that I did note that, again, B was all for design work. And the number of days that those various processes or tasks were going to be done was like 900. So that, that again was kind of surprising. I think that's like three years, isn't it?
That's a large, I mean, that's a large project. It's 11 million dollars in HUD funding. And it's, it's going to take, it's a complicated area. You know, so it's, it's going to take a lot of public meetings and a lot of thought, meaningful thought to come up with something.
So even though we have a real need to work on that, we have to be patient?
There's no simple answer.
No simple answer. Okay, that was just my comment. But thank you for working on it. I guess we'll be patient.
Okay, any other comments on the agenda? Okay, the wild cats have come and gone, number 10A, 11.
Thank you.
Or homeowners. Huh? Are you on the agenda? Laura, are you just interrupting for fun of it?
Interrupting for the fun of it?
I saw.
They were great kids. I'm sorry.
Okay, now, what do we got on us? Who's bringing this up?
Mayor, you're on, Mayor, council member items. And Councilmember Forbes has a green sheet here to discuss the requirements of the HOA for communities to furnish a beach shuttle service.
Right, and I.
Yes, Fred.
Yes, I've, I've got.
I agree with you. Go ahead.
I, I've got John Asher here who is representing all four of the communities. They've all agreed to cast their, their luck or their future fortune with John. So John, give the presentation.
I would have a motion to approve. If I have a second.
Second.
Okay. So you got a motion to approve in a second.
Any other comment?
Yeah, I've got about a two-hour presentation.
Yeah.
Denial, then.
No, well.
Public comment?
We have to say about this?
No, we know, we've heard from Fred.
Yeah.
We, uh.
Excuse me.
We're ready to vote on it.
Mayor, excuse me. I have to interject now because I've sort of gone, gone along with the fund that we're having here. But I was going to bring it up in the council person's items, but I think we need to, certainly when I have some questions about it that I think need to be addressed. And I think we should, we should address these issues with a little more seriousness because they are important. Not the ones we've already passed, even though I voted for them. I think we owe it to both.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm telling you.
Go ahead.
I'm first saying a procedural thing that I'd like, point that I'm making.
There's a motion on the table in a second, and now it's your turn to talk. Go ahead, ask your question.
My question is, is that I, I did read the material, and I'd like the staff to discuss the original thinking for why we had asked these communities to provide shuttle service to the beaches. It was my understanding that they were included because of, they were, they, they were a trade-off to some development characteristics of the individual communities.
Right. Well, I can, John.
I'd like the staff to talk to, to.
Pardon me?
I'd like the staff to respond to that.
Okay.
Good evening. John Dolmer, for the record. It, when these were approved, I was not in this position, so I'm going off of memory from previous jobs. But if my memory holds, what had happened was the city had concerns on two areas. One was the traffic on Benita Beach Road, which remains a concern. And the second was parking at the beach, or the public beach. And as a way to reduce that amount of required or needed public parking, this was one of the efforts that they had employed. The condition that they passed was, says the development will be required to provide a shuttle service as an alternative means of transportation. Says it's supposed to be run twice a day, starts running at the 300th certificate of occupancy. It wraps up with a statement, "This service may be discontinued or reduced by the HOA with consent of the city manager designate and notification to the city council should the existence of the shuttle be deemed unnecessary due to low utilization." This item is before you because there really wasn't a lot of evidence one way or another in terms of how long it had been running and what's been going on. We've had several discussions with HOAs and with Mr. Asher about this. They obviously vary strongly that they don't need or want the shuttle. I'm not going to say the condition was placed in there unnecessarily. It does serve a purpose. These type of things kind of chip away at the problem. If this council feels that it's no longer necessary or does not want to provide this service, they haven't been running it for the past year or so, so you won't see any real difference. Just, I would keep in the back of your minds as we go forward, these small improvements and these things that we do to reduce the impact on public facilities, they do add up. So when we do get rid of them, or if we do delete these requirements, that does shift the demand, it shifts the burden. So obviously, this is not a request that you're going to see a lot of changes in traffic count numbers because it hasn't been operating, but just something to think about, so.
Can we bring this back in a couple of years?
Yes, sir. We, we are currently coming towards the end of a moratorium that the council approved 18 months ago or two years ago? Was it a year ago? It all runs together now. So, yes, sir. So we, we can extend that moratorium should you wish. Those are all options to you.
Yes, Fred.
Well, I, first of all, they've got in the presentation how this all happened. It was originally planned for a 5,000-unit development. It made a lot of sense, maybe. The second thing is they got pricing of how much it costs. You can get a Uber cab for less money than it costs them to run the bus and get it to when you want to go, and that's not going to overload the parking. The other thing about it, two other HOAs in town, Pelican Landing and Benita Bay have it. But guess what? If you're Benita Bay, it takes you out to the beach club that they own. If you're in Pelican Landing, it takes you from where you park your car in a big parking lot to a little parking lot down by the beach. So it's, it's, and the, and the distance that the shuttle has to run on this thing is many, many times more than what a shuttle runs from Benita Bay out to their beach club. And most of the HOAs, their residents only go to the beach once or twice a year, except if they have some people from up north in and they'd like to go to the beach because they've got plenty of amenities on-site and they don't want to go down and fight that parking. That's a, that's a problem myself. But they've got a presentation if you want to hear it.
And Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. We also have the new ware system that Lee Tran is going to provide. So this could subsidize what they're doing.
Yes, could I ask Arlene? These homeowner associations are out in the Beach Road, is that right, Fred? Out near your district? Would this Lee Tran thing go out to their district to pick them up?
Currently, that is not part of the, part of the service area. What we have been discussing with Lee County is if there's opportunities for expansion in the future, there would be an investment from the city in partnership with the county on that. So there would be a cost in the future if we expanded area. Also, typically, we'd have to look at, Lee Tran runs in a lot of grant funds. They usually service our low-to-moder income communities, so we'd have to look at some qualifications. So there might be, you know, a little bit higher fees for that.
Okay, Fred, yes.
Well, they, they, they can go down. It runs out beyond Benita Grandy and Beach Road. So they can go down and park their car at, down at the Publix parking lot and catch something for their beach if they want to do it.
That's an option, I guess. Yes, Jesse?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I'd just like to say that, you know, when I was reading this, you know, there's no data to indicate that this works at all. And it hasn't been running for the last year. So I think it's, I think it's a really easy thing for us to now look at this and say, there's no reason we should be making arbitrary rules that may or may not work. It's not even our place to do that. So if they have a shuttle, great. If they don't have a shuttle, great. It's not going to solve anything. And it's just, I mean, it's an example of a place where we can step back and let people do what they want to do. And I think this is a good, small example where we could and should do that.
Excuse me, but the reason why we don't have any data is because they haven't gotten it operating. I mean, we, we don't have any information whether it works or doesn't work because they never instituted the original shuttle.
They did. The Benita National, excuse me for interrupting, I'm sorry. Benita National did operate it for over a year with very low ridership. And our community, Valencia, Benita, we started it just before COVID hit, and we were in operation about a month. And again, there was very little ridership. There were one or two families that used it several times, and that was it. One other point, if I might.
Yes, Fred.
They did a survey of all these communities, and overwhelming majority of them don't want it. And so you're doing what the people in the communities want. They don't, like I say, they don't go to the beach that much. You know, the beach is a great place if you're a tourist. There's more tourists there and people that probably live on Hector Island using the beach or coming up from Fort Myers Beach, but.
Yeah, I think it's just one more vehicle jamming up the road.
There's no room to park if you take your car there away.
Can we amend the motion to say we visit this in three years, or two years, or a year, something like that?
I think you're saying extend the moratorium for five years, or can't we just get rid of it altogether?
Yeah.
I, I think that, yeah.
And then we, we, we visit it.
The, the motion on the floor is, is to terminate the requirement.
I'm not.
And I'll second that.
I'm not in favor of that because we don't really know what kind of impact it has on, on the traffic along the beach. We, we have no way of assessing it, and at least the original thinking there was, I mean, if you have, people are not gonna take an Uber. I don't think so. If they want to go to the beach, they'll get in their car and go. That's the whole thing. You, you know, I think that we should at least provide a provision to take another look at this, because we could have a disaster down at the, at the beach with the traffic. We don't, we don't know what's gonna happen. We're operating without information. The original, when they were running it originally, you didn't even, how many houses did you have at Benita National, the original thing?
Benita National probably had eight, nine hundred homes at that time.
Steve, I'm from Benita National, I'm board of the HOA. We, I'm sorry, we had, um, the last full year we had was 2019. We had our own shuttle. We had, it was a physical vehicle. We ran multiple round trips on a daily basis. The entire year, we, we kept track of our ridership. The entire year, we had 120 round trips. The vehicle cost us, just the meat, the operating expense was $39,000. So that came to about $316 a round trip that the members of the HOA were forced to pay for very limited use. When we did the survey this last year, we had a supermajority of our members just tell us that this was of no value to them. They didn't want it, and I think with the experience that we had with the other communities who conducted the same survey, it's in the packet, you can see the questions. It was developed by attorneys so that the questions had a limited ability to be challenged. The great majority, I think about 74, 75% of the residents of the communities voted to, not in favor of, of maintaining the shuttle or having a shuttle service. We have our amenities. We don't really, we don't really go to the beach that much. If we go, we'll go to docks or one of the restaurants down Beach Road, but I think the statistics that we showed in 2018 and 2019, just from Benita National, which is the largest of the communities at the end of Beach Road, suggests fully that the beach shuttle has very little value to the city. It's not accomplishing what your goals are, and we understand the goals. I mean, we had no problem with that, but the statistics that we have show that it doesn't support the goals that were originally intended to be pursued by the, the development order and the original ordinance going way back. So, and you can ask us to delay it again, and we'll, I mean, we'll serve at the, do it the pleasure of, of the council, but we'll be right back up here again in two years with the same discussion. It's not gonna change.
Can I call a question? Is that possible?
Yes.
You can call a question. There would, there would need.
Well, we already have.
Unless there's an objection, you can just move forward.
Move forward.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Wait a minute, I was interrupted. What, what are we voting on?
This is, this is on the, the vote to remove the restriction, on the most, the pending motion.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crumbah?
No.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye. Motion carries. Thanks, folks.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor.
That's one less vehicle on the road. Government overreach. Okay.
Next item, Mayor, is a public hearing on a request to vacate, abandon, discontinue at the public interest in a six, six feet of a 12-foot utility and drainage easement within the Park Place plat.
Okay, the boat, is, I, I spoke with Mr. Sweet here, and he tells me there's no problem with the drainage out there.
I'm sure he'll tell.
And the electric, and, uh.
Correct. For, for the record, Jay Sweet with Community Development. So, the, this plat was done in the late 60s in Lee County. It showed the drainage going between these two lots. It's actually six feet on either lot, so it's a 12-foot wide easement. The Shineholds have bought the, a house there, they've bought the vacant lot. They want to expand their house over the property line, and simply put, I went out there, did an inspection. There is no drainage. The catch basin wasn't installed there. It was installed at another spot down the road into the ditch, and so the drainage is in, but it just, it wasn't put where the original design was. They've sent the letters out. We've asked Public Works, do they need it? And they said, no, they, they have no use for it. So our recommendation is to go ahead and vacate the entire 12-in easement, six feet on either side of the, each lot.
Make a motion to remove it.
Second.
Any other comment? Roll call, please.
A public, public comment.
A public comment on that?
Yes.
Yes, public comment? Yes, sir.
Just for a moment, since I'm here. Thank you, Mr. Sweet. Hello, everybody. I'm Camden Ashmore from Ashmore Design. Mr. Sweet put it pretty much perfectly there. There's just six feet on either side of the owner's two lots that they have, and they just simply wish to vacate the easements, drainage, and utility. There's been no objections from Lee County Utilities or Benita Springs to do so, and they just simply wish to vacate that so they can combine their lots and then build their house across both of them.
Sounds good.
Exactly it.
Sounds good.
Thank you for your time.
And that was a buildable lot.
Very much so, yes. There's a, there's an existing single-family house on the, the western lot now, and they wish to just expand it over to the eastern lot.
Okay, very good. Any other public comment? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crumbah?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon? Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, what's next here? 13A, capital improvements. All I have on my note here is that the city of Benita Springs is planning on spending $21,610,550 on capital improvements in the city in the next year. That's impressive to me. That's roads, there's a lot of roadwork, so.
Okay, this is a first reading of an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, adopting the 2021, 2022 five-year capital improvement program, annual update, providing for legislative findings, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date.
Motion moved second. Second.
Discussion?
Did you want to talk?
I just wanted to point out, could we, like, also work in actual infrastructure of roads? Because midtown is coming, and we need to start providing ways that we can direct traffic and, away from downtown, so we can have downtown be more walkable. So if we can start working on our other areas, because all I see in the infrastructure is the 41, um, you know, quadrant.
So, Mayor and Council, part of what we'll be asking for in the workshop in January is a reprioritization of your capital improvements.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And that gives us the opportunity to then look at costs and schedule them, so when you come to the budget process, we'll be able to put some figures to that. So we're, we're gonna be looking at future sidewalk improvements, future roadway improvements, and so from the master plans that we currently have, and ask you to reprioritize those. As some of the projects Matt's completing, we'll roll down the list. One of the things Councilman Corey had us add last time in the budget is, is the different categories that these CIPs are in, whether they're in pro, you know, in planning process, under construction.
Right.
Or near completion. So we'll be able to provide you an update with that, and then we'll rotate through the list.
When is that, that we do?
We're, we're gonna be asking you for a workshop in January.
In January, okay.
Probably near the end of January.
Do you need to vote on this?
Uh, there's a motion and a second to move this to second hearing.
Okay. Any more comment?
Um, I think I do have one more, and there's just a different one. Page seven.
He's checking her notes.
Nope, okay.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crumbah?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is a first reading of an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, amending the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter Four, Zoning, Section 4-1893, dash, street, or, sorry, street setbacks, to establish setbacks for alleys, providing for law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, and modifications that may arise from consideration of public hearing and effective date.
Public hearing?
This is not a public hearing. This is a first reading. Staff was intending to make their presentation at the second reading and public hearing.
Okay, I'm moved. Motion to move it?
Second.
Second. Any other comment? Roll call.
Councilwoman Crumbah?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, 14A, home rule.
No, the next, the next item is a first reading of an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, approving the petition of Benita Springs Utilities Incorporated extending the term of the franchise in, in Benita Springs Ordinance Number 0214 and providing for an effective date.
Motion moved second.
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 Did you motion and second?
No, motion to move to second reading.
Okay.
Okay. The motion is second. Do we have a comment? Vote.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crumbah?
Aye.
Okay, 14A, this is a first reading and public hearing, actually, it's a, I'm sorry, just a first public hearing on the home rule development agreement for the property next door at 9161 BBR LLC and 9171 BBR LLC at 9161 Benita Beach Road and 9171 Benita Beach Road. If you recall, at the last meeting, there was a request from the developer of that project. Once they had developed more specific site renderings, they were asked for an increase of height of 10 feet.
They're gonna have more.
They are here, if you have any questions, but this is the first reading and then a public hearing, and then there'll be a second public hearing and adoption at your next meeting.
Motion moved second.
Second. Beautiful.
Any other comments? Let's vote, Debbie.
Councilwoman Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crumbah?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Okay, is Lisa next?
Yes.
15A, October monthly financial report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Lisa Robertson will come forward to give you a brief presentation.
Hopefully, IT will appear and make this all look very easy. Oh, yes?
We're gonna take away your lavender if you can't figure it out.
Um, good evening, Lisa Robertson, for the record. We're here tonight to review your brief October financial report. October is your first month in this new fiscal year, and I must say, from a financial reporting standpoint, it's the least exciting month you'll have, for the facts that I have listed here. Most of the revenue that we receive in October are from the transactions that occurred in the prior fiscal year. An example of that are your taxes that are collected by the state are remitted, they're collected in one month and then remitted to the city in the next month. And also, the majority of your expenditures are, that are funded in October are for goods and services received before, on or before September 30th. That's the end of your last fiscal year. Obviously, we can't, we don't pay people before they provide us the products or the services, so, and as I said, the first month of the fiscal year has very little reportable financial activity. Our fiscal year that just ended, September 30th, I wanted to give you all a status update on that. Our staff will be, is in the process of developing preliminary numbers for the fiscal year that just ended, September 30th. We hope to have preliminary financial report to council sometime in January, probably near the end. It takes 90 days at a minimum and a little longer to close. While we say October is the lightest month from a financial reporting standpoint, it's the most intensive from a transactional standpoint because we are just trying so hard, all the staff. They're trying to make sure their vendors get their invoices in for their projects, to make sure everything gets reported in the prior year because that's where the budget was. So the fiscal year is, will be preliminary, last fiscal year, until the audit is complete. Our audit is scheduled for onsite testing in January. That means the auditors come out and look at everything we have, all of our records, but the audit will not be finalized until March. Your next slide outlines the last three fiscal years of cash balances. Again, we have some, some nice trends there. We'll, you look at the note there, it indicates the general fund unassigned balance. It'll be recalculated once we finalize our last fiscal year numbers. We'll come up with a new number. We gave you all preliminary number in your budget, which we know couldn't possibly be. We'll, we'll actually, it, hopefully, we get a little more revenue, hopefully, maybe a little less expenses this year, so we'll be tabulating that and presenting it to you later. This slide is not very good financial news, but it's not significant from a numerical standpoint. The state issues every April 1st a population estimate. In years that they do not do a census, the, the state goes through a detailed calculation, estimation process. So every year that we didn't have a census, they were a little more optimistic about our growth, by about 2%. And as you can see here, what happens, this year, we got the census number, and they have to basically adjust to actual, and they do that for everyone. So what we have on your slide are all the different entities that are located in Lee County, to show you all how the different, different entities have moved. This is really interesting. I mean, you, you can tell, I mean, they do put, the state puts a lot of economic data into the numbers, so to be off 2% for us, pretty good. Fort Myers Beach, they contracted somewhat, and that's to do probably with, you know, units, growth, condos, that kind of thing. I'm not sure how much undeveloped land they have, but Sanibel was very interesting, that they contracted 6% from what they had originally estimated. Again, as a total of Lee County, 4% growth, that's still outstanding. What that 2% drop in population will mean to us, not this fiscal year, but next fiscal year, it'll impact our state revenue because a lot of our formulas that are at the state level are driven by population. So the two biggest pieces that we have from a revenue standpoint, sales tax and municipal revenue sharing will have the highest impact. At this point, we projected to be about 120,000, not a significant number, but we will be watching this, and hopefully, it'll stay right at about that when we get our numbers from the state, which we'll receive next fiscal year. So hopefully, even though October's not that exciting for financial reporting, hopefully, we brought you some facts that are useful for you.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
I, I do have one issue.
Yes.
Yes, yes, I'm the chair.
Yes, yes, and Lisa was willing to wait, and I was going to address you, sir, next. May I ask Lisa a question?
What if I said no? Go ahead. Will you please ask me first before you start bleeping? Thank you. Go ahead, ask Lisa.
On page seven, it says, unearned revenue. That's to do with grants.
That.
And I just have a problem with that label.
Well, you can take it up with the governmental accounting standards board because they make us use that terminology. How that works is grant money, we receive, they're usually reimbursement grants, so we can't recognize them, and should not, as revenue until we actually have expended them for their purpose. So when we expend it, then we will recognize it as revenue, but until then, we have to show it in the bank. It's in the bank, and we have to show it there, and show it in our financial records, but we cannot recognize it as revenue, so there has to be unearned revenue.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't like the term either, but it has to have, you know, it will be revenue in the future, as long as we're able to expend that money for its purpose. Okay, great.
Very good, that's a good explanation of that.
Thank you, guys.
Anything else for Lisa?
Uh, I just had one comment, but not, not so much for Lisa, but I, I know the state's kicking around the idea of a gas tax holiday, and I think multi-month, so I was just wondering if we were looking at that and projecting.
We haven't received any information on that yet, but we will, and we are watching the news, so as soon as we can come up with the.
We haven't received any official.
Official, yes, yes, sorry.
So that's when we'll be able to sort of plan from there.
Does that may affect some of our road product, projects?
It, it may. We, we do, we do try to budget those among with the impact fees and, and the general revenue, but we would have to reassess that when we brought it forward.
Just wanted to make sure we were looking at it.
Yep, we definitely are.
Okay, fifteen B, Arlene, are you handling that one, please?
Yes, mayor and council. The reason this is before you, this is typically a consent agenda item. The applicant has asked for some additional hours. Typically, the special events conclude at nine PM, so that everything can be shut down by ten in accordance with the decibel levels of our noise ordinance. This applicant is requesting for on weekdays to operate the fair from five PM to ten PM, and from, on weekends, from three PM to eleven PM. So because of the request of the additional hours and to the evening, we did feel that it was appropriate to ask council off of the consent agenda item for your interest in, in the event.
But they also ask, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, may I just?
Yes.
Thank you. They also ask if they can extend this, if we agree, for five more years.
Each, each year, they need to come back for a special event permit. That's part of our process.
Noise is a nuisance, and I think the regular nine o'clock shutdown, so they're out of there by ten. Is that what you're, is that what you normally do?
Typically, your process is, is that the, the noise shuts down at nine. By the time everything shut, with other events, by the time everything closes down, it's usually ten. But the, but the noise, the actual permits that we issue are for nine PM.
I don't know these people, and I don't, I know the people that live in that neighborhood, and they don't need the noise, the congestion. Yes, Jesse?
I, I hear what you're saying on that. One of the things that made me a little more comfortable on the staff report, they, they show that the noise can only go to a certain level. So, and it's, I think it's over a two-week period, and it's far enough away, and if it stays within what the staff said, I don't think it's gonna create any major issues.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I live within hearing distance of that facility, and I don't hear the music. I don't, actually, before they, before they opened, I heard more.
With the dogs?
Well, or concerts or something. But since the card room has opened, I do not hear any music after nine. I don't even hear any music at nine. It just doesn't carry.
I, I think, I think the staff has conditioned it so that, that we could get the same effect of closing at nine, because they, they have committed to not having music or loud noise by nine o'clock. So they're just gonna run their, whatever.
The carnival activities.
The carnival activities for the children. And again, since we don't have to renew this exact thing, if it doesn't work for these two weeks, next year, when they come back to us, we could say, you have to close down by ten. We could try it out, because experimentally, we'll find out. If the neighbors all complained, then we made a mistake. But if we did it in, in a regular fashion, they would be there till nine o'clock anyway.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say.
Second.
Whatever we're approving. Staff's recommendation?
Yeah, staff's recommendation.
I'll second that.
I just want to correct, are you saying for the extended hours, then?
Yes.
Okay.
With the conditions.
With the conditions.
With the conditions. The staff's recommendation is to permit the extended hours with conditions.
Right.
Correct.
Yep.
Any other more comments? Vote?
Mayor Steinmeier?
No.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCrumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, mayor and council report. We'll go one at a time. We're not gonna get into a debate. Fred, would you like to start us off tonight?
I'll pass tonight.
Oh, good. Jesse?
Yeah, I've got two things. The first thing is, I was lucky enough last week to head over to the other coast for the C forty-four reservoir ribbon-cutting ceremony, which was really great. We actually got to see the pumps turned on, so it's a piece of Florida history. So, for those of you not familiar, it's part of the SERP program, which is the Certified Everglades Restoration Projects, and this is one of the largest ones that the state's actually accomplished. So it's gonna hold a ton of water. So it helps with the overall system. So, I, I drove over with Mayor Holly Smith from Sanibel, and it was really just an awesome thing to be a part of. And then last, you all are familiar with the fact that we had issues under the bridge again this morning. One of the great things, one of the great things with that is there was arrests this morning. So, two weeks ago, they thought they had us, and here we are, two weeks later, and we have, I believe, four arrests. And cooler than that, Officer Hankins, in the back of the room, could you wave, stand up? Because I'd like to give Officer Hankins a round of applause. He's actually the guy who, who did the grab last, grab last night. So, thank you very much. On behalf of your city, it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, I guess?
I'm good, thanks.
You're good. Amy, you got?
I do want to, I have two quick things. First of all, I was pleased, since our last meeting, to participate at Carl Schwings Bench Memorial Ceremony at the dog park, and that was lovely, to see his family and to recognize a small part of the effort that he made to make Benita what it is today. So that was a privilege. And I did, and I, and I have to say that today, I think you were all invited to do the webinar with Coastal and Heartland National Estuary Partnership that was from one to five today. So I didn't do it from one to five, but I did do it from maybe one to four. And I want to thank Jackie Jensen, because she, she agreed. I know she didn't have, I didn't want to give her more work, but she agreed to cover it so that we, the city would be exposed to that. And I, and I, I hope that that, it was recorded, and I hope that it's available for you, you to look at it, because they had five different topics, so to speak, and I, and I think that many of them would be useful for us. And the reason why I listened to it is because, as you know, we are part of this compact, and they were reporting on effort that was done in Collier County and also on the east coast, Broward County. And Dr. Severisi gave a, a speech and a presentation, and Noah gave a presentation. There was someone that talked about a natural process to help with mitigation. And they also have a, a piece on FEMA on the new rating system. So I think there are at least four different areas that would be worth us, if you're interested to, in retrospect, to look at it. I think different staff members might have found it useful. I, I didn't think it was gonna be useful, so it really surprised me, but it was particularly useful. But it did take quite a bit of time. And I think that they're gonna have it provided for us. And there's a lot of written material that we can get, and if anybody wants to talk to me about it, you know, about the different subjects, we can have some of the written material provided, I think, to the council. But in regard to what our participation will be in the future with the compact, I think it would really, it really helped me a lot to understand sort of the direction we're going. So I recommend that.
Okay, Laura, you have anything to add tonight?
Let's see. On Saturday, Benita Fest was fabulous. It was so much fun. Music was great. I actually knew the tune, so I guess it dates me, if anybody was there. And lots of family, lots of kids, and informational areas. And then, the Rotary is selling trees across the street. On Friday, Santa's coming. But more importantly, on Tuesday, the seventh, downtown, Benita's gonna light a tree, but Santa's gonna be there, too. So the seventh, we're having a wonderful, family-friendly gathering. And I tell you, if you haven't been, the joy that you see on the kids' faces and the families, it's amazing. So I hope everyone will at least, like, pop by.
Okay, Christopher?
I'm good.
You're good. I'd like to mimic what, that Christmas in Benita is fabulous. And all the kids waiting to see Santa, and they're, it is one of the best things. We're gonna light the tree right around six o'clock. So if you want to see the tree lit, all the city council are gonna be there, and we're gonna light the tree. And we're getting into the Christmas season, and joy to the world. Back on the, the consent agenda on cottage number two, we approved a short-term, my comment, and I was down there, and that number two building needs some work.
Police.
What was that?
I'm sorry, you didn't finish your sentence, so.
That needs some work to paint, and, and on the, that'd be the north, south side. The siding's falling apart, and it needs to be some work on that.
Typically, Mr. Mayor, Nicole Perino, Parks and Recreation Director, once we do have a tenant move out, we do renovate the cottage. We just did that with cottage number three.
I understand. It looks good. Very good.
Yep. So, once we.
She moving out, or?
Cottage number three is moving in, because we just finished the renovations.
About number two?
Number two, we did just extend the lease through season, and they do have the opportunity to submit with the new RFP for letters of interest. But we will try to do some work to the exterior.
Yeah, with some blocking and paint on one side.
This summer. Yep, yep, we do.
The wind doesn't blow, shooter.
Yes, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, by the way, thanks for the, for the new toilet seat at the ban shell bathroom.
You are very welcome. All six of them have been replaced.
Very good, very good. Okay, anybody else? Public comment? Nobody, no public comment? Are you motion to adjourn?
Adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn. Thank you, folks.